We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on May 21, 2024 to order at 3:01. Please join me for a moment of silence. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on any agenda item or during the hearing of the visitors, portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you are here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of the presentation. Staff will distribute those to the council. If you are unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session, agenda item? Seeing no one is registered to speak, we will now recess the regular session and convene the work session with a report from the city manager. And before we get started, yeah, people at home and on TV don't adjust your sets. This is not Dylan Meek here at the mayor's table. This is Mayor Jim Holmes. I just got sworn in last week, and I'm happy to serve a two-year term here. We have a, this is our third Tuesday in a row to have a meeting. This is not the way it's always going to be. We'll slow that down a little bit. It's also an 800-page agenda today for those at home. This is quite a bit to read through, but it was all interesting stuff. And it did have five Gantt charts in it, so I do appreciate the home style. Eight hundred pages, three weeks in a row, and five Gantt charts.
A new era dawns.
I can do that. I can do that. Anyway, a report from the city manager. City Manager Ford.
Welcome. Welcome, Mayor Holmes. You didn't say Holmes here, so is that a new era? Is that part of the new?
Yeah, that'll be the new for today.
Part of the new era?
I'll gavel in with Holmes here.
Whatever way you want to run it. It's your show. We don't, we have no changes to the agenda tonight. And for employee recognition, I had, I'd wanted to introduce our new Chief Economic Development Officer, Danny Chavez. But, you know, we've already sent him off to go recruit some businesses, so he is not here today. So he'll be with us at our next meeting, first meeting in June. I'm excited to have him on board and hitting the ground running very quickly, and I'll have him here in June to formally introduce him to the council and the community. I do have two informal reports on the agenda today. IR 342, of course, was an update on our interstate decorative lighting projects as well as some information about beautification along University Parks Drive and Riverfront. Would take any questions you might have on that IR. And then, of course, IR 343 provides some historical context around the pavement condition index, the PCI scoring, as well as an update on the current PCI in our community. According to our most recent estimate, we have 41% of the streets in good condition, the city streets, 41% in good condition, 23% in fair condition, and the balance 36% in poor condition. We included a link to a new dashboard. It's in draft status. That's showing the screenshot here of that dashboard. There's a link in the agenda packet if people want to be able to drill down into specific neighborhoods and learn more about the condition of our streets, as well as their individual, their residential street and sidewalks out front of their homes, they can get a sense of how it's graded.
Hey, Bradley. This screenshot of the dashboard, this is up-to-date, basically. This is taken from like a live data set. So the average citywide PCI at 53.7. Could you refresh my memory on what that was when we sort of undertook this major street revamping project several years ago?
It'd go mid-40s, but somebody's going to have to get me exact. Was it 40, 45 or so?
I think it was low 40s.
Low 40s.
Back in 2016.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was 39 or 40, actually.
That sounds more familiar to me.
Or quickly going into the 30s.
So for 2016, that was the number?
Yeah.
And at 2024, we just got into 53.7?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results.
One of the things, agreed. Using the average PCI presents some challenges to really actually know what the progress you're making because we're always going to have this big bucket of residential streets that are in the 20s or below, and they draw down the average because we're not making any progress on those.
Right.
Because we don't have a neighborhood street program yet. So you've seen a lot of streets go from the poor category or fair category up into the 90-plus PCI. But when you have such a large bucket at the bottom, it kind of creates this negative pressure on the average. So we've kind of pivoted to the good, fair, poor. Paul, you want to add any more on that to help me? But do you have that, how the good has gone?
Let me add. I mean, I'm not saying that this is not, we have not been making progress, so don't misconstrue my statement.
No. I'm tracking you.
But I just know that, I know we begun the conversation, I think, we didn't get to finish because we didn't get that presentation that budget, but we started talking about maybe doing what we're doing in a different way. So perhaps it is in, by year, you know, perhaps we will take either separated by districts or separated by arterial and neighborhood, I mean, or and/or develop a neighborhood streets program that is specific for that and separate and apart from our other major railways. And so that way, then we can not only see a true depiction of where we are versus where we've been, but, you know, our residents can also because we know, but, I mean, that's the thing, though. In real life, we're saying if 2027 is the year we're doing District One, then District One is going to be uncomfortable in 2027, however.
But they know.
Yes, but, yes, and. But the end result will be far better than what it was. And so that's something, I don't know if we need to go back and do a real deep dive on that at another session, a true work session, a special, I don't know, whatever, but we need to figure it out.
Yeah, I think it points to, if you read page 18 and 19, an informal report, that we, just in the last three years, I guess, we've spent 144 million. It's an expensive proposition, for sure.
Absolutely.
Had we not, and when I first got on council in 2016, we were spending about 3 million, 2 to 3 million. So, and I think we were told back then, if we didn't spend at least 25 million, the PCI would continue to go down and down and down. So it's expensive, I think, which leads into a lot of our budgeting for this coming year about how we pay for, what resources we use to pay for the streets and how we keep, continue to get that PCI higher and higher. It's not an inexpensive construct, for sure.
And according to the Waco Trib article from 2018, in 2015, half of the pavement was poor.
Yeah.
And so now it's at 38%. So that's considerable progress. And also in 2018, it was about 46% on the PCI. So that's also.
2018?
Yeah. So that's also some good strides there on the overall pavement condition index. So glad to see this council has done some good investing and moved the needle there on the pavement, but seems like, calls for some continued investment.
Well, we've had this conversation ever since I've been on the council. But in the last few years, we have added, the council has added more money to the street budget. And so I feel like we're making progress compared to, you know, before.
Absolutely.
And so, of course, and obviously, I would like to see more progress, but where are we going to get the money and how are we going to do that? But I would, I would support what Councilmember Bearfield said. Let's have a talk about, do we, as a council, want to signal out just one district at a time to do some work, you know, to say, okay, guys, to our constituents, we're going to do District Two tomorrow. Day after tomorrow, we're going to do District Three. I mean, that kind of discussion. And I think our constituents will, seeing that work is being done and know that a certain year, it's going to be our turn, I think, I think will work better than us telling us. Well, every street in Waco has a year to be fixed. So you need to go on the iWaco, MyWaco app and see when we're scheduled for your street to be fixed. I think when we have that discussion, it'd be better, and I think our constituents will know that we are talking about each district getting certain look and feel and work being done at this particular time and knowing we will be next or whenever. That's how I feel. I feel like Councilmember Bearfield, we need to have a serious discussion about, like she said, we really didn't get into it at the budget.
Yeah, started to.
At the retreat, so, so many things.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Councilmember Rodriguez, and maybe not district by district, but some certainty, because at this point, we've been trying to get the PCI up. And maybe there's a more strategic and surgical way to, and as Councilmember Bearfield said, maybe it's arterials and neighborhoods or, you know, and this is what we started talking about at the offsite, what our strategy is going forward and as transparent with the taxpayers and the public as we can be on, as Councilmember Rodriguez is saying, when is your street going to get fixed? Well, our strategy is this, and here's when it will get fixed. So, good discussion. Appreciate it. Anything else on those informal reports?
Just about the lighting, do we have, I think we kind of missed a step somewhere, maybe we, because where we are with, I know that it was incredibly expensive for the bridge lighting, I think in the way it was presented, but perhaps since a few years have passed and technology has advanced some, maybe we can look again. Because I think it would be, it's an amazing asset that we have, right? And especially with the riverfront coming in the way that it is, with Foster sitting right there, I think if we had the ability to be more dynamic with our lit bridge, at least all of them work at the same time, it would be great. Because, you know, I think it's, as you drive into the city, that is a powerful picture. And so I would ask if maybe staff, we could go back out and look again and see if there's some alternatives to making that the star it should be.
Councilmember, I think we're in line with where you're thinking and the council's thinking on this, is it is an asset. It's not an expertise that we have necessarily in-house. And so going out into the market and finding, you know, consultants that deal with bridge lighting that could craft the plan, you know, is our next step. We went out in '22, didn't have great responses.
Different.
And so we're going to take a little more tactical approach this time and hopeful that we'll get you some options that are both impactful and, maybe impactful visually, but maybe not so impactful financially.
Right, because I think they wanted a kidney, huh?
Yeah. The middle ground approach on that was like $10 million.
Right.
You know, it was sizable and, but I do think, I think we're going to keep working on it, to your point, and look forward to bringing you back a strategy that could be deployable.
Awesome.
Yeah, I'll echo Councilmember Bearfield on that. I think when it was working, and I, you know, it was, I think we used kind of obsolete materials and it didn't work that long, but when it was working, it was beautiful. I mean, it was something to be pretty proud of in nighttime shots of Waco, always had, there was three of them, one of them would be that bridge. If there was two of them, one would be that bridge. And then it kind of quit working because I don't, it was before a lot of us got on council. But I think that is so key, and I'm perfectly happy with the ambient nature of the way it was. I know that we looked, it seemed like when we were going to RFP with that last one, we were looking at a lot of different options of all kinds of different lighting and drone kind of looking stuff. But let's see what it looks like again, maybe something that's just how it was, except bring it up to, obviously not how it is now because nothing's working right now. But I think that's important, particularly as we're finishing up this riverwalk in the next couple of years, if we can get the bridge lighting going too, I think it would be a nice accent and sort of a branding for the city.
Good.
But two great informal reports. Appreciate it.
For sure. We have nine public hearings on the agenda today. Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, will provide an update on those towards the end of the work session, hopefully. We've got a lot on the work session today, but hopefully we have time for that update from Clint. We have 24 resolutions on the agendas today. I'm going to highlight just one. It's Resolution 367, which approves financing for SLF Waco LLC. It provides financing by the Public Finance Authority for the issuance of tax-exempt bonds to finance a senior housing project called The Cotages at Warren Road in District Three. The amount approved will be up to $58 million for the construction of 146 units of senior housing, mainly townhomes, as I understand it. Wanted to note one thing in particular, the, what we're doing today, allowing for the issuance of tax-exempt bonds is a recognition. It's not us taking on new debt. It's not an obligation of the city of Waco. Rather, the entity involved is pursuing tax-exempt private activity bonds. And since it's occurring within our city limits, they're required to hold a public hearing, which has been held in early May, as well as receive your approval from the City Council for the Public Finance Authority to issue the bonds. So again, this is not going on our list of debt. It's not a debt that we're obligated to repay. So wanted to make sure that was clear for the public watching. We do have five ordinances on your agenda today as well. Ordinances 386 and 387 take action regarding the issuance of our GO refunding bonds and our combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, our COs. And we have a work session on this today, so questions on 386, 387. Let's hold those for the work session presentation. And then lastly, we have ordinance 388, which authorizes the signature of our incoming Chief Financial Officer, Blue Kostalich, for effective June 4th. That's his first day of work. And this just allows him to hit the ground running and has, for him to have an appropriate signature and so he can start paying people as soon as he starts with the city. That's Ashley's joke today. Pretty good.
I, we laugh.
Oh, yeah, you got to laugh. It's better than some of mine, that's for sure. And Blue, we look forward to introducing you to Blue as well at an upcoming council meeting. He's moving in from Lubbock and looking forward to y'all meet, to meet him.
Nice.
The remainder of the ordinances are on second reading, and I'll take any questions or comments you have at this time, council.
Any questions for City Manager Ford?
The only question I had, well, I have a couple, but this one, this one really, the one that's going to do the renovation for City Hall ground floor, is that a local company? I think it was ZAMCO or ZAP?
It is. I'm getting thumbs up from the crowd. Three thumbs up.
I didn't see the thumbs of where.
Right there.
Somebody's team is out here in the, they're all color-coordinated, it looks like to me, blue and gray.
I didn't see Clint's thumb go up, so, did I see it? Oh, okay.
He's got one, he got one for him too. Four thumbs up.
That was my question.
They are a local firm, and this is the space where our old emergency management office used to be. If you've ever been on the, what we're calling the ground floor now. It's definitely in need of some sprucing up. It also, since Councilmember brought it up, I do want to highlight, it's kind of the last portion of City Hall where we can squeeze additional space out of. So we're, I would call us at full capacity at the end of that effort.
The building was built when, right?
1930. It's going to have its 100th birthday soon.
I think that we have grown a little since then, so I can imagine that there's not enough room in the end.
Well, it used to be the jail, too. The top of City Hall was the jail. Because we used to walk down Austin Avenue and the guys would holler at us, hey, call so-and-so and tell him I'm here, you know? But yes, I know. If that happened.
The pieces of Waco history you weren't planning for. I love you.
Just ask me, I'll tell you. We would stand out in front of the Fox Theater and listen to them, see if there was anybody we know.
Fantastic, yeah. Let's get that into the rendering. And no other questions on the business session? The consent agenda includes Resolution 2024 362 through Resolution 2024 385. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? There being none, the consent agenda includes Resolutions 2024 362 through 2024 385 tonight. The next item on the agenda is work session items 2024 344 through 2024 348. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Work session 344 is a discussion of our upcoming CO and our entire bond package. So I'm going to invite Assistant Director Rusty Hill to the table, as well as our representatives from PFM and TFC to present on this year's package. Yeah, I think Glenn should come up, yeah.
Glenn Opel, Bond Counsel.
I think we bring everybody on up.
Rusty, if you don't mind doing the honor of just making sure the public knows who each team member is, and you can take it away from here.
Rusty Hill, City Waco Finance Department. We're here today to discuss the bond issues that are coming up. As Bradley mentioned, we have two ordinances, one for general obligation refunding bonds and one for our certificates of obligation. This started back last summer when y'all approved a budget, and in March, y'all approved our notice of intent, and we published that notice. And today, we're asking you to approve those ordinances. With that, coming June 4th, we would intend to negotiate the bonds with the underwriting team that y'all also selected in March and hopefully close this bond issue around June the 27th. But we have here with us today Glenn Opel with Bracewell. He's our Bond Counsel, here to answer any questions about the ordinances, particulars regarding that. Adrian Galvane with T Arena Financial Consulting, and Blake Roberts with PFM Financial Consulting. And Esther Young is also with us as well. And I'll turn it over, I guess, to Blake.
Thank you, Rusty. Mayor Holmes, City Council, good to be with you all today. My name is Blake Roberts. I'm a Managing Director with PFM. This is sort of a rehash of what we discussed a few months ago when you authorized the notice of intent to issue COs. Not much new information, but appreciate the significance of this bond sale for the city and the comprehensive list of projects that will be financed with these bonds. So want to make sure that the public and you all are aware of what the game plan will be going forward. We've done a lot of work already to get to this point. This is the culmination of a lot of numbers and meetings and documents. And so with your consideration for the ordinances later on at City Council, at the full meeting, we'll embark upon the bond sale in the next few weeks. I'm with PFM. Adrian and Esther are with T Arena as your co-FA team today. We'll be briefed with slides. So here is the game plan. We'll be in the market in early June, in about two weeks, on June the 4th. I think that was the CFO's, new CFO's first day, so he will hit the ground running with the bond sale. But we will have, at this point, three series of bonds. Combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, Series 2024 A, about 203 million in par, our principal amount. Combination tax and revenue COs or certificates of obligation, Series 2024 B, those are taxable. And then about a 38.29 million principal amount, general obligation refunding bond. The market has been interesting the past few weeks and months, so we do anticipate savings of about 1.2 million on a net present value basis. That means in just today's dollars. That may fluctuate, the ordinances that you'll have to consider, setting minimum net present value savings amount of about 2.5% of the bond deal. So if we don't hit the savings threshold, then we won't refund the bonds. We will issue those COs and refunding bonds on the same day, on or about that Tuesday, June the 4th, with your underwriting syndicate. And we have received one rating back from Moody's, affirmed at AA1, and expect S&amp;P to come back tomorrow. Had really fantastic conversations with both of those agencies, had the chance to sit with the finance team and the economic development team and the FA team, and impressed upon them sort of the great economic story of Waco, the great financial management story of Waco, and that even though there is a significant amount of debt being issued, it's for very important strategic projects for the city and its residents. So those meetings went well. Those are the second highest ratings possible on a AAA scale. Here are the key dates. We have blown through quickly the first four events there. We're here today with a City Council approval of a parameters bond sale. Again, if the market cooperates, we'll be in the market with a bond sale June the 4th and then closing and receive those funds for new projects on June the 27th and refund the old bonds for one of those three issuances. This is the team. You see your FAs and Bond Counsel today. The other, I guess, item to note is, and we previewed this last time, we will sell the bonds via what's called a negotiated bond sale, meaning we pre-hire an underwriting syndicate. The City Council approved this syndicate a few months ago, and you can see the firms there listed. Seabert Williams Shanken Company is the senior manager. They will sort of be the first chair at an investment bank. They are a prominent minority-owned investment bank that does a lot of bond deals in Texas, and we're proud to have them lead your deal. Underwriting counsel is a firm out of Dallas called Weston Associates. And then the image on the right is the cover page of what we call the preliminary official statement. It's the document that investors will read and consider as they evaluate if they'll buy Waco bonds. And so it will contain lots of financial information, legal information about the bonds. We just showed you the cover page, but I do believe that's been provided to you as agenda backup, if you're interested in reading that document as well. This is an overview of your bond ratings. Again, very proud to have AA1 from Moody's. We do expect to get AA+ back from S&amp;P tomorrow. Again, good conversations with both of those rating agencies on the right. We provided some commentary. Again, they value your strong and growing economy and really the economic development. And I will say, you know, we've been doing this a long time, the story map that was provided by your team that sort of shows all the things that are going on in Waco was a very dynamic way for those folks from Dallas and one was from Denver, who may not have been to Waco, to be able to kind of see what is going on virtually. They actually came on to visit and stayed in Waco, so spent tax dollars here, and we gave them a tour, or I'm sorry, the virtual tour, allowed them to sort of on their own go see sites that Jeremy and his team had put in that story map. So urge you to look at that if you haven't been able to already. It was, it was really cool. Other things, strong financial reserves, those are really important to your rating. The one thing that, again, we talked about this last time, you can't control is sort of the socioeconomic view they take of sort of weaker income levels, that does factor in, some student income levels here, and then also debt relative to peers. But again, when you're funding important capital projects for your community, there's really not much you can do about that. So all in all, really strong bond ratings.
On that, real quick, you mind sliding back one? Thanks. So that's the socioeconomic, like, is that elevated outstanding debt, say the average debt per capita, like, meaning household or individual, or is that municipal debt?
It's municipal debt. So it's not sort of your own liability burden or on a personal basis. It's, really the key metrics that they'll look at are how much of the city's municipal bonds that are outstanding relative to, for example, your revenue budget. And that's really one of the key metrics that they focus on. The other is sort of how much of your debt service plus your pension contribution. The other is sort of how much of your, your, your debt service plus your pension contributions plus your retiree healthcare benefits constitute as a percentage of your, of your budget. So things like municipal debt per capita, municipal debt compared to your budget, those are sort of the ratios that they're focused on when it comes to Waco.
Thank you.
From a historical perspective, has been certainly very interesting in the market in the last year. This is a graphical depiction of over the last decade, the 10-year municipal tax exempt benchmark rate. So this is the 10-year spot rate for municipal borrowers like yourself, you can see where we've been since 2014, the trough there, the low points being in 2020 when COVID pandemic hit and the Fed moved its benchmark rate to zero. We since have seen increases in interest rates, but the 10-year benchmark today is just above 2.5%. Waco price like all issuers to a spread to this, so your rate won't be 2.5%. I was in the market this morning with a 30-year bond deal that sold at about 4.25%. We expect that will be around the rate for you all between 4 and 4.25% on a tax exempt basis.
Was that rating similar, AA?
This issuer was AA minus, so they're a little bit lower than you and it was a 4.25%. So you could expect to do, all things being equal, a little bit better than that given your rating today. That's, that's the freshest data point I have as of about two hours ago, we priced that deal.
Thanks.
This is what's called the municipal bond AAA yield curve. This is pretty technical, but, but I want to make you aware of the fact that, you know, there's been lots of talk about the Fed increasing short-term rates and mortgage rates being at 7% and that's absolutely correct that rates are, are up from where they were two years ago. It's really been impactful in your market and what we're doing on the short end of the yield curve. So what I mean by that is if you're borrowing on a one-year loan, you're actually better off from a rate standpoint borrowing on a four-year loan or an eight-year loan because rates are lower. So where that yield curve dips down, that shows you sort of how long you're borrowing for and where the corresponding rate would be. This is what we call inverted yield curve, all that means it's jargon for short-term rates are currently higher than certain longer-term rates and then it normalizes out even longer. Takeaway for you is we expect tax exempt rates to be between 4 and 4.25% when we price your bonds. Here's an overview of the, of the projects that I think is important to hover on. This is what will be funded with the new money portions of the bonds. The 24A tax exempt total project of about 219 million, spread across different city purposes. The taxable piece is about 43.6 million for combined, for combined projects of 262 million and change. Here is a pro forma or forward-looking view of the city's debt balance, debt balances after we issue these bonds. We've broken it out by purpose, so you can see in the middle, in the left column, the purpose and the middle column, the existing principal balances and then after we issue these bonds and what those new principal balances would be, about 960 million in total principal outstanding, spread across those different purposes. Here's a graphical depiction or picture of the city's debt service after these bonds are sold. The left graph is the debt service, the, the principal plus the interest on all of the city's debt that's paid back by taxes, by, by debt service taxes from, borne by city residents. That's just, that's just above 19 million and it'll go just above 22 million after we sell these bonds and you can see it's a nice conservative debt structure that sort of rolls downhill thereafter. And then the right graphic is a depiction of all the other debt service repaid from water, sewer, turds, buckets, drainage, et cetera, and, and how that's repaid and a principal and interest on that. What this shows is, you know, there's 960 of principal, the majority of that is paid by sources other than taxes. This is our show your work slide, this is actually from the POS, preliminary, preliminary official statement, the offering document for investors and it lays out what your, the city debt service schedule will look like after we sell these bonds. And the bonds in the, in the sort of third column there are the refunding bonds. So we would again only issue those if there are savings to be achieved. That was a lot of information, a short amount of time. Again, very happy to be bringing this bond deal to market, to answer any questions you may have. Either myself or Adrian or your Bond Counsel Glenn are available to do so.
Any questions? I'll lead off and just say, great report, great report and it's just a kind of a, I know that pricing, this execution is all about kind of what the macro market is, is telling us of the financial markets in a macro level, which you've demonstrated clearly on the inverted curve. It's kind of a weird time to be in the market for sure, but it also is the Waco market and to me that, or the rating I'll say, it's kind of the macro financial markets and then what is our rating, which is more about the City Waco, the Waco market, our processes, our, it really goes down to our people, our balance sheet, our reserves, which all applaud staff and management, City Waco management in getting to that rating, that AA rating is not an easy one to get by Moody's and S&amp;P. So, which helps us in our execution because it allows us to have a, a better rating and a lower interest rate, which is what this is all about. So again, I applaud staff, thanks, thanks to you guys for putting all this together but staff in, in getting the, the information for this kind of execution. I have a question on the refi, the 38.3 million of refi, is there kind of a breakpoint in your mind where, is it 100,000 or is it, what is, where we can't save, right now we're saving a million too? Yeah, we do it, right? Is there something, is there an execution cost that you say, you know, it's just, it's a break even, it doesn't really make sense to do, what is, what is that?
Yeah, I see my colleague doing some math over there. There, there is a threshold which is about 2.5% savings, meaning that 2.5% about, about 38 million, there you go, $950,000.
950,000, it's a number where if you come in below that number, you would not do it, it wouldn't make economic sense for you to do it.
Because there's a breakup fee in there or a, not a breakup fee, but a prepayment penalty?
It would make more sense to leave them outstanding and wait for the market to get better and then refund them at that time versus refund them in a, in a market where you're not hitting your minimum thresholds.
Because when you refi, do you put those into a lockout period?
It's a 10-year call, so you're, you're, it's, it's a one-shot to take advantage of this current funding.
Okay, that makes sense to me all of a sudden, because I was thinking you would not put it into a 10-year lockout, you'd just put it into annual opportunity to refi, but you can't, you got to put it into a lockout.
The 10-year call will be in place.
Okay, that makes perfect sense. Let me see, the other thing I had here, yeah, it's 262 million, just close my comments. And we, it seems like every year, City Manager Ford, we're coming up and ACM's in the back row, we're coming up with projects that are, that we need to get done, that total 2.5 billion to 3 billion dollars. If we were to fix everything that we wanted to fix today in Waco. And so we prioritize, synchronize and figure out, you know, this little chip, chipping away at it every year. So we came up with 262 million of projects here that we think will serve the city well. And this isn't to say we're going to get everything done with 262 million, but we're going to make, we're making progress on infrastructure needs and streets, sidewalks and water waste, water, solid waste across the board, but it's not all going to get done. We'll be, we will be looking at leverage again next year, but good process and hopefully the markets hold up to where we can get, get execution next month and appreciate the work. That's all I have.
Definitely appreciate your work.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor and Counsel, our next work session is work session 345. It's starting at 341, so we almost landed right on time, Lisa. And that's a discussion of utility services, expansion of the Bullhide Creek wastewater treatment plant. Lisa Tyers here, our Director of Utilities and she's going to update you on our ongoing efforts to take that plant from a million and a half gallons a day of capacity to 4 million gallons a day of capacity and Lisa, you got it?
Thank you, good afternoon. I am here to talk about the Bullhide Creek wastewater treatment plant expansion. So I'm going to go over the current plant, expansion of the plant, cost of the expansion and the project schedule. So Bullhide Creek, so this plant was completed in 2011 on 225 acres, so it's a very large piece of property. It's located to the east of I-35 in, in Lorena, off of Cooksey Lane. It's not easy to find, I will tell you that. And if you drove down that road, you might not even know there was a plant there. So when we built this plant, we spent about 11 million dollars in construction. And this plant provides sewage treatment for the cities of Waco, Hewitt in Lorena and as, counts as, sorry, City Manager Ford said, it is a 1.5 million gallon a day plant, which means that's what we're permitted to discharge each and every day. So this is our Bullhide Creek service area. Our current service area is in the gray, it is 5,925 acres. There is an area up at the top of the screen that is gray with lines in it. That is a known future addition to the service area for this plant. And the blue lined area is future potential service area. And so combined, all of that comes to another 6,000 acres. In the last five and a half years, we've had 2,165 housing starts in this area. So looking at this map, you can see a lot of those green lines, that is our sewer lines, our main sewer lines and we have been doing a lot of projects out on Highway 84 to increase capacity out there, but one of our projects was for us to be able to split flows at Cloys Creek, which is right at the landfill, which is a wastewater lift station, and to split the flows so that some of our flows can continue onto central plant and the rest of those flows will go to Bullhide. Why that matters is because without that split, we would need to enlarge sewer lines that run through Hunter's Run and Western Ridge, then cross over Hewitt Drive, go through several business parking lots and go through multiple industrial properties where we would need to acquire additional easements. So splitting the flows made more sense, so that means we're pushing more waste to Bullhide Creek wastewater treatment plant. If everyone remembers, there is a future plant out in this area, but we are trying to delay that as long as we possibly can. So the expansion of Bullhide Creek, so why expand? So the growth in the Highway 84 corridor, we're trying to preserve capacity in lines we currently have without having to increase those lines and we're dividing those flows. We've had requests for additional capacity from the other cities that also have their sewage going to that plant and we have the TCUQ, so Texas Commission of Environmental Inequality, that's our regulatory agents, agency, they have what they call the 75-90 rule. So the 75-90 rule means that when you hit 75% of the capacity of that plant, you need to be in design. When you hit 90% of the capacity of that plant, you need to be in construction. And they define that capacity, hitting that capacity as three consecutive months that you've hit or exceeded that percentage of capacity. So here is the chart that shows since 2018 what our monthly average flows have been. You can see that, looking at this, that we probably should have been in design in 2018. We were not, we were in study though at that time and we knew that we were going to have to do something at this plant. We have not hit at this point, three consecutive months of being at 90% of capacity, but we hope to be in construction before that happens. So the division of capacity, Bullhide Creek wastewater treatment plant is a 1.5 million, million gallon a day plant right now. Waco has 460,000 gallons of that plant, Hewitt has 720,000 gallons of that plant and Lorena has 320,000 gallons of that plant. In the future, that, the capacity division would be 2,160,000 gallons for the city of Waco, 1,220,000 gallons for the city of Hewitt and 620,000 gallons for the city of Lorena. So a total of 4 million gallons a day. So the cost of the expansion.
Here's the plan, we get the warhead and we hold the world ransom for $1 million.
Don't you think we should maybe ask for more than a million dollars? A million dollars isn't exactly a lot of money these days.
Okay then, we hold the world ransom for $100 billion.
So while it's not quite gone up 100 billion dollars, the cost of the plant has gone up. Sorry, see if I can get that to go.
Touche, touche on that one.
So when we started this, our first estimate in 2021 was that the plant would cost about 40 million gallons or we like to equate it to the cost per gallon, which is, would be 16 dollars. Our latest cost estimate was 75 million or 30 dollars a gallon. So we took our plans back from being at 90%, we took them back to 60% and said, let's do some value engineering. We can delay some items, it doesn't mean that we're not going to have to have those items at some point in the future, probably within a two or three-year time span. It just means we could delay them right now. And then we also went back to look at materials, we were able to get that down to 70 million dollars, which would be 28 dollars a gallon and we are continuing to look for potential cost-cutting opportunities. I can tell you that our engineer has been out talking to multiple contractors to see what the cost of the plant would really be and we believe we can get the costs down even further. But the more contractors we have bidding on it, the more likely we are to be able to drive that, that price down. So the city of Hewitt has requested 500,000 gallons and the city of Lorena has requested 300 gallons, 300,000 gallons of the 2.5 million gallon a day expansion. Both cities will be, begin paying for bonds issued past and present in October of this year. So we've already expended some funds, they're going to go back and pay us for that. And then the city of Hewitt will assume 20% of the cost and Lorena will assume 12% of the cost.
And with those gallon, the request of those gallons, are we pricing that at the 16 dollars a gallon that you were sort of referencing before?
No, those would be at, at whatever the, the construction cost comes in at.
Great.
So it really is, once we borrow all the money for the plant, they will, they will be paying every month a portion of that in their payment to us. So this is what our past bonding and our proposed future bonding looks like, broken down by each city. It's not that the other cities will actually bond because the way our contract with them was written when we assumed W-Mars and we brought it back to being just a city of Waco facilities, was that we would bond, but they would pay us a capital cost if we expanded the capacity of the plant each month. So this is what that breakdown of the cost of the bonds would be for each, each city and, and they, like I said, they'll be getting, getting paying us back in October of 2024 this year. So project schedule, you can see where we're at today, we began April of 2020. Plants take a lot of time, with this plant in particular, we originally thought we would be able to do some expansion of our air capacity within the plant, which would have given us an extra 500,000 gallons a day and we might have been able to delay the plant a little bit. We found that we, we couldn't, TCUQ wouldn't approve it, we had already exceeded the 75% amount, the capacity rules, and so they required for us to go ahead and go into design. We also originally thought- We also originally thought we were only going to go to a 3 million gallon a day plant, but we needed that extra capacity, especially as we started considering taking in the Highway 84 waste to delay the other plant. And so permitting takes a long time. So we spent about a year working on getting our permit from TCEQ. We met with the friends of Bullhide Creek to make sure they knew what was going on and what would be happening at the plant. We have done that. And we filed our permit. We received our permit. And then we got that new opinion of probable cost, and we kind of took that step back to try and reduce that cost. So right now, we're in the middle of the value engineering. We have received 90% plans back on the table for us to begin evaluating and review. Those plans also have to be sent to TCEQ for their review and approval. So there could be some back and forth there. And then we hope to advertise in either late this year or the first of next year and get the bid open and begin construction sometime in July of 2025. It will be a two-year construction project, so we will not expect to have that extra capacity until the year of 2027. Do you all have any questions?
Have any questions for Lisa, guys?
Thanks, Lisa. Quick question, though, in the division of capacity slide. I'm trying to figure out our current numbers, why Waco's numbers are so much considerably smaller than Hewitt's numbers?
So when that plant was originally built, it wasn't that Waco had. Waco didn't have a whole lot of waste that would be going there, no one thought we were going to have. Lorena had had a five-and-a-half-year moratorium at that point. They could not add anybody to their sewer system for five-and-a-half years. That is the danger everybody runs into if you don't have sufficient capacity in your plants. And Hewitt had capacity in the plant, but they began rerouting some of their flows because they have a lot more capacity in Central Plant. But the way their city is laid out and the way the topography is, they can gravity flow to Bullhide, and they were able to get rid of some lift stations. And so we just didn't need a whole lot of capacity, or thought we weren't going to need a whole lot of capacity. And then we had the subdivisions go out on Ritchie Grove that are so expansive. And again, we originally weren't planning on having Highway 84's waste split, so about 80% of Highway 84 goes to Bullhide Plant now.
And with these numbers, those future forecasts, we've taken into concession, you know, what we couldn't, or didn't consider the last time, expanded growth. I mean, I know you can never know, and I don't know if your crystal ball is not dusty, but have we kind of taken consideration into what could be?
I think we've done the best job that we can with the information we have right now. We have studied it multiple times. We have a great wastewater model, so we have modeled things multiple times. There still is a lot of concern because all of the waste that goes to Central Plant goes into that flat creek
Yeah.
interceptor, which is the same ones that GPI. And I don't think they're calling it Project Lit anymore. They're calling it, I want to say PISA? But there's another major industrial plant that is flowing in there. There's still quite a bit of industrial land that could be developed. That would be our biggest concern because that would not be splitting and going into that flat creek interceptor. We'd have to do some more work to connect into that interceptor. But I think all that would go to Central still. I don't think that would go to Bullhide. But really, what we're trying to do is preserve as much capacity right now as what we can.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I had a couple here. The, kind of following what Councilmember Bearfield was saying, on the existing, this slide particularly, on the existing plant, was the cost shared on that? Or maybe you asked that question and I didn't hear it?
So the way that plant was built, it would have been a W-Mars plant. It still is. We kind of consider all these still, I want to say W-Mars assets, because all the cities still share in the cost of operations of those plants. And so it would have just been part of the cost of operations for all the cities would have shared, based on what your overall flow amount was. So it would have taken Central's plant's flows into considerations, as well as what would be going to Bullhide, and everybody then paid their share of cost.
And so we're doing this new, this expansion a little more scientifically, I would say?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think in the future, Lorena will want more capacity than what you see there. I think it's also possible at some point, if Waco had an extra capacity, that that might be a discussion we would have with them. I think Hewitt is pretty much, this will be it for them. They don't have a whole lot more land to grow. Originally, I think a few years back, Lorena came to us and asked for a lot of capacity, but capacity's expensive, as you can tell. Building this plant is expensive. And so I think this was the bite-sized chunk for them.
Can you go back to that slide? It wasn't in the materials, and I haven't looked at it today. The one that shows kind of the map.
The map? Okay.
Yeah. So we're still going to keep like the green up in there. We're still going to be hauling some over to the Central Plant.
We will still be hauling sludge over to the Central Plant so that it can be dried and treated and turn into the soil amendment pellets. Yes, sir.
But that's going to be done at Bullhide?
That will be transported from Bullhide to Central Plant.
But the West Highway 84 gray, the city of Waco portion of this, I'll call it, everything, all the wastewater there will be going down to Bullhide? I just see that little green thing going across town, which leads to Central Plant, right?
So right now, there's a 20-80 split, so 20% of the flows are still going to Central Plant, and 80% are going to Bullhide. That flow percentage may be adjusted as we need for it to be, but that's what we're trying to do, is to manage those flows so that we provide enough capacity in our lines, you know, without having to build new lines. Either line, if we had to enlarge either line, it would be not just disruptive, but incredibly expensive, I think, to get the easements that we would need to add an additional line alongside.
Got it. Great. Good. Thanks for clarifying that. Just the footprint of this new addition is not going to be that big of a, can you flip to another slide that shows the, I don't think we have a, where's it going to fit in there?
So I don't have the actual footprint. The footprint within the fence itself is about four acres. If you take in the road, it is about five acres. There is also a bonus feature with this plant. At the very end, the kind of pointy part, is a, what they call a bonus feature, but it's a wetlands. And so we run our effluent. We have to take our samples prior to that, but then it runs through a wetlands and then disposes into Bullhide Creek. I mean, there's beaver, I mean, it's a very, very beautiful piece of property. There's beavers out there. There's all sorts of wildlife. So yeah, they're out there playing in that wetlands. We will need to do some maintenance on the wetlands. That is also part of this project because the beavers have changed some of the water flow. And we need to kind of redo that a little bit.
I've been out there a couple times. It is an impressive plant. Matt, Kyle with the Trib and I have visited out there a couple months ago. Pretty impressive little deal. My last question, are there any, and I guess I've got my, I'll invoke Dylan Meek here. I've got my 50-year goggles on here. Is there any rights to the effluent after it goes out of there? Is that split 20, 30, 50, or whatever?
That is not split. That is all city of Waco. But we have, at times, sold some of it to the city of Lorena, who then sells it to, there's a, I want to say, a concrete manufacturer not too far from there, and they have used it in their products. But it's kind of, sometimes they need it, sometimes they don't, so.
But that's 100% Waco? I just think it becomes an important part of the equation as we look down the road on how precious water is going to be and how effluent, I think, is going to be. I think in the next 25 years, that's not going to be a dirty word, you know? It's going to be, hey, we got access to effluent. That's good. So anyway, good report. Any other questions? Bradley?
Thanks, Lisa.
That's it. Thanks, Lisa, for the additional context. It's very, very well done. All right, Mayor and Council, our next work session, we've got Cody Patillo coming up, our Director of Solid Waste Services. This is Work Session 346. It's a discussion of the various projects going on in solid waste. They're, like Lisa's team, balancing a lot, including the construction of a new regional landfill and transfer station. So Cody's going to walk through where those projects are, show us some imagery if you haven't been out to either site, and also give you some perspective on how our capacity at the current landfill is going, related to the schedule of when the new landfill will be done. Cody?
All right. Thank you, City Manager Ford. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to give you an update on the solid waste facilities. Cody Patillo, the Director of Solid Waste. Today, we're going to be talking about the existing, or the capacity at the existing landfill, MSW 948A, the progress of the new landfill, MSW 2400, and the transfer station. So if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to jump right on in. Starting off with the existing landfill, this is some information charts we've shown before, the next couple of slides, just with some updated data. So this is the annual tonnage we receive at existing landfill per year. From 2018 to 2021, it was pretty, same amount of tons we were getting each year. And there was a significant jump from '21 to '22, about a 22% jump. And that was due to Lacey Lakeview landfill reaching their capacity and shutting down, not accepting as many customers, really being selective on who they would take. So we saw a big jump in there. They were going through a permit expansion, and that was approved in February of 2024. And so since then, we have seen a pretty significant drop in our reduction of activity, or there's been a pretty significant reduction of activity at the landfill, which is what we expected. They went through their process a little faster than what we thought they would, but overall, it's a good thing for the city of Waco. So now we're projecting to be about 324,000, 325,000 tons for this TCEQ fiscal year, and probably less for 2025. So there's a drop of revenue there, but overall, that's a good thing for solid waste in the city of Waco. It's going to help extend that capacity or that airspace. So here is our airspace capacity. So this is, again, something we've shown before. We survey our property or our landfill twice every year to really dial in what that closure date's going to be. Right, the two in the bottom in the red, that is our most recent report. And so it's looking at September of 2025 at our current compaction rate. And then if we reduced our compaction rate about 20% to 25%, it would drop to about May. Now, this report was completed before Lacey Lakeview opened up and before we saw that reduction in activity. So once we look at, you know, projecting out the tons we're getting now and adjusting that report, it's more like December of 2025. So good news. We're looking good. And as we go through the next few slides and show the development, the construction schedules, overall, we feel like we're in pretty good shape. All right, now to the new developments. MSW 2400 is the new landfill. So here is the overall site layout. So this landfill is a bunch of projects that make up the overall landfill development. At the top of the screen, you see FM 939. That's a project that we already completed. It was a widening that was required through the traffic analysis. And we also, right below that label, FM 939 is TK Cemetery, we constructed an architectural wall around TK Cemetery, which is complete, and that was required through settlement agreements. So now we're going to go into the projects that actually make up the landfill. The first project is the entrance road. Here's where it's at in relation to the site. So this is under construction. These images are a few weeks old. We just got updated drone footage probably an hour ago. I wish we could have added in here because there's paving, there's just a lot more work that's been done. But we'll throw that in the council report so you all can see that. For this, it's about .17 or .7 miles of roadway improvements. It's going to include mostly asphalt with some concrete, as well as flex-based paving that, once you get closer to the actual landfill in the cells, as well as some additional infrastructure and landscaping, water improvement, storm improvements. Engineer was Walker Partners. Our contractor was Knife River South. The cost was $3.4 million. So Knife River's been doing a fantastic job. They are several months ahead of schedule already. They are paving right now. Should be finished up with that this week, depending on the weather. For this project, our most critical piece of this project, which the whole road is going to be important for the overall life of the landfill, but the most critical part of this project was that, these culverts that you see right in front of you. We had, this was an early milestone in the project, and we had to get these installed so the contractor for Sector 1 could get across this creek and start construction. So we had to make sure that, you know, coordinate with Knife River to make sure this was, these were constructed so there weren't any delays for that contractor, because that was really the critical path. But Knife River did a great job. Their subs, H&amp;B, did a great job and really went above and beyond to make sure there were no delays, no impacts to the overall schedule to the landfill. And this was yesterday. We actually have some better pictures. Again, we'll share that in the council report. But they're moving along. Like we said, they're a few months ahead of schedule, and there's been no major changes with the overall project. All right, here's Sector 1. This is where it's at in relation to the overall site. So this project is under construction also. So this is really, this is really the meat of the landfill. This is the first cell. We call it Sector 1, but it is also the first cell. It's about 20 acres. We have to move about 1.4 million cubic yards of dirt to get this thing open. So scope is excavation, the landfill liner, and all the other infrastructure that's required to operate a landfill. Engineer is SCS Engineer, and the contractor is Hammett Excavation. Hammett has done work at the existing landfill, has done excellent work there, and we're thrilled to have him on this project. Again, this project is also tracking a few months ahead of schedule. With that, we're still pretty early. They've been consistently operating, even with all the weather that we've had. So we're cautiously optimistic that they're going to hit the schedules that they're sharing with us, which are, again, a few, quite a few months ahead of schedule. And then this picture, the kind of the light brown, that's the excavation of the first All right, here's our perimeter fence. So that project, that is the critical path, the Sector 1 project, to get this landfill open. This project is not necessarily on the critical path, but it is necessary to finish this before we can open the landfill. It's installing 19,000 linear feet of fencing, and there's a wide range of different types of fence we're utilizing. It's a new contract that we have not used, but so far, no complaints. They've been, done a really good job of communicating, bringing up any issues that they see coming up, that it's not going to, so we don't have anything slowing them down. This is the maintenance building. So this is really three projects in one. It's the actual maintenance building where we're going to pull equipment into, heavy equipment into work on it. We're building a concrete slab for our administration building and our citizens' collection station. This is actually on the agenda today for approval with HTS contractors. Their bid is a little bit over the engineer's estimate at $3.5 million. With this, there's two things I want to mention on this. This part of the project does not have to be complete for us to open the landfill. It's definitely something we want to have open, and it's a priority to get it open, but it is not the priority to open the landfill. But we're going to, we should, we should have it open, but any concerns there, we can still push, and if it's not finished, we'll be okay. We don't have to have an office to work out of. All we need is an open space so where we can get waste on the ground and cover it up. And then mentioning the concrete slab for the modular building. It's a landfill. We didn't want to build a permitted structure as we started looking at the cost. It's pretty typical in landfill industry not to do a permitted structure and to do something like this for the modular-type office facility. And looking like we're going to save probably around $750,000 by going towards this. We don't need a Taj Mahal out there. We need some simple, clean office space. All right, scale. So the scales, we do have to have complete before we open this project, or before we open the site. So this is in the bidding phase right now. We actually rejected all bids at the last council meeting. So we were requiring a specific set of scales. We had five bidders. Three of the bidders did not bid the correct set of scales. So it was pretty evident, we didn't do a good enough job of communicating the requirements. So we didn't feel like it was fair to move forward. And so to be fair to our partners and our vendors, as well as protect the city, we felt it was in the best interest to go ahead and reject the bids and reissue. And so we've already reissued RFB, and it's a condensed timeline, so looking to get a consideration, a resolution for consideration of an award sometime in June. So with these scales, it's a little bit different than your setup at the existing landfill. Have you ever been to the existing landfill? If you've ever been to the existing landfill, I'm sure you've experienced pretty long lines. For this landfill and transfer station, we're gonna have two inbound and one outbound scale. And we're also gonna have a bypass lane for our transfer trailers. So it'll the wait times will be a lot less, and the customer experience will be a lot better at both sites.
Cody, are transfer trailers running all the time? Are there specific times for transfer trailers to maybe mitigate some of that backup?
So the transfer trailers will run basically the entire time the landfill's open.
Okay.
But there's there's enough space to get in and out that there won't be any long queuing. And and they'll be able to bypass the scales.
Hence the second line. So if there was trucks, you know, then Andrea can just drive over here and.
That's correct. So the two scales, one will be a cash scale, credit card scale, to where if a citizen comes in, it's their second time to ever come to the landfill. They don't have an account. They'll come in, they'll pay at a cashier's or a teller's window. And the second scale, a little further away from the scale house, that's gonna be for city Waco trucks, franchise haulers that have an account, have a charge account they can go through. And there'll be a wizard, they can hit in a code, and they'll get automatically billed. So there won't be there won't be a need to have this interaction like we have now with every single customer that comes through.
Got it. Thank you.
Agencies by adding the additional scale. All right, for utilities, this this was we had easements and funding for our extending three-phase power with Navisota Valley Electric. These these were approved in the previous council meeting. And we're working with Navisota Valley Electric right now through the contract phase and getting this construction going. They've been pretty busy with all the recent storms, so we're we're being patient and working with them. But overall, no concerns about schedule with getting the the electricity to the site. And speaking of schedule, so no major changes from the our previous presentation, except the the bottom, the bottom row of accepting waste. We've moved that up a couple of weeks based on the progress we've seen at the Sector One excavation. But the most important thing is that we're still on the good side of that that red line that's going vertical. And that's when we anticipate for the closure date of the existing landfill. All right, here's our cost information. This is total cost, and we break it out per project. One note is the maintenance building. It should be about 3.5 million instead of 3.1 with that contract. We're going to potentially go into HCS, and that makes the that's gonna increase the actual cost on the the total cost graph to about like 2.6. So about 2 million less than what we estimated. And then for our, one thing to mention again, is our engineering survey inspection. 2.5 million is sounds like a pretty big number, talking about engineering dollars. But when whenever you're budgeting for capital projects, you're typically budgeting 10% of the the estimated construction cost for just design. And then an additional 10% if you're looking at third-party inspection. And we're about 12% overall. So we got some pretty good value with the our consultants that we've worked with over several years on the development of these sites. Transfer station. So this doesn't have quite as many projects that make up the overall transfer station. The main one is the transfer station facility project, which is under construction. That is constructing the building, doing all the pavement, the scales, and all the utilities onsite. Engineers SCS and the contractors actually Hammett Excavation also, which is the contractor for our Sector One project. Initially, we had some little bit of concern over resources since those are pretty much the two most important projects in the history of city of Waco solid waste. But after visiting with them and visiting with our consultants, they they're a pretty large company, and they've they've kind of helped to ease our concerns over resources. So with this project, we we did something we haven't done before. We added a early finish incentive to this project. So if it's a no excuse incentive, if Hammett Excavation's able to finish this project by, I think, mid-January, they can receive an incentive of up to $200,000. And then we have a tiered structure. So if if they can't finish by then, if they get every two weeks, it drops by a certain amount. So it's it's something we strategically put into the contract. It's something that we want to pay. We're help we're doing everything we can to keep them moving, so there's no delays and try to help them get that full incentive. And based on everything we've talked or seen from them, all the communication, they still are fully believe they're gonna get it, so we're we're hoping for that. All right, a couple of projects that support the transfer station. This is a sewer line extension, so we're tying into his existing city of Waco manhole, and this will support the the transfer station. It's this is also on agenda today for consideration approval to quality contractors. And then this is FM 3400 widening. It's very similar to what we did with FM 939 for the new landfill, but just a smaller scale, just one turn lane, a left a left-hand turn lane on the on the southbound direction. That is currently in the bidding phase. I believe it opens later this week. So once this project opens and and the scales, we'll have every project related to transfer station and the land new landfill under under contract and pretty soon under construction. For schedule, so the major change here is the accepting accepting waste date moved out a few weeks. Are we for transfer station registration, the TCQ review? That's going pretty well. We've we've had a September finish date on that, but it's more likely we're gonna see that in the summer based on the communication we've had with TCQ. But the real critical path is the actual facility construction. But even with that accepting waste or the opening of a facility pushing out, we're still, you know, still on that good side of that red line. Overall, the cost, so we have total cost and cost per project. For the for the total cost, if you look on the actual, the one thing to mention is that does not include any any money for FM 3400 widening. So we're likely gonna be close to that estimated cost, if not a little bit over. All right, here's the overall schedule. Again, I think the big story is that we're we're on the right side of that red line. And so looking at the looking at the two projects and then looking at the cost slides, we're investing a lot in the solid waste, close to $40 million. So the debt issuance is going up, which is means rates are gonna go up. In previous council retreat, not this this few couple of weeks ago, but last year, we had mentioned a strategy of raising the rate 7% per year until 2027, which is $1.41. And so we're still moving forward with that strategy. It fits well within our cost of service. And then you can also we'll also see adjustments to commercial and roll off commercial and landfill fees as we move forward. So for summary, cost for the new landfill, about 20.2 million, a little about 2 million under our estimates. Transfer station anticipated being close to $17.8 million, which would be about 200,000 over our estimates. For timing, landfill opening around April and May of 2025. Transfer station opening March, April of 2025, and then the new landfill reaching capacity in July of 2025. But as we talked about with Lacy Lakeview opening, it's more realistically probably end of the year of 2025. And then just to address elephant in the room, what happens if the existing landfill fills up before our new sites are open? So we've Lacy Lakeview or Ace in the hole, right? Reached out to them, and they are willing to accept our waste if if something if it comes to that situation. And for some reason, they're not able to. We do have other options, but right now that would be our alternative. We would have an increased fees for disposal costs because right now we don't we don't have those rights since we own our own landfill. But there wouldn't be any major operational concerns since it's relatively close. And with that, we're gonna give a future update in November of 2024, and I'll take any questions, comments you may have.
Any questions for Cody?
Cody, you mentioned a the potential overage or the projected overage now of about $200,000 over what was supposed to. Does that include the $200,000 incentive to finish on or ahead of schedule for the project mentioned earlier?
No, that that does not. So if if they hit it, there would be 400.
Okay. And could you speak at all to your best guess on what what we would stand to be out if the project was not? You know what I mean? Like in lieu of the incentive, if it delays past a certain time, you know, when do we start losing money? Obviously, that's why you incentivize, because you stand to lose on the other end. But give or take, you know, basically, what are we saving by incentivizing this?
Yeah, so if if we don't have the transfer station open, and we can't get waste to the new landfill, either one, if we're taking it to Lacy Lakeview, well, then we're paying $46 a ton. Right now, we don't we don't pay anything per ton. And that disposal cost goes up significantly. So there's there's a definitely a saving if we were able to open it up, not not have to do that. And then if our landfill was to open up our new one and we had to go to it, there's operational costs associated with that with additional fuel. And we don't have the we don't have enough trucks to maintain the level of service we have now and direct haul to the new landfill. That's that's the reason we're adding a transfer station.
Great. Appreciate it. Thanks, Cody. Great presentation. This is awesome. I love seeing that, you know, we're we're in front of the red line right now. It is my hope that whatever it is that you're doing continues across all city departments and capital projects we have going on. So thanks, man.
Thank you, Mayor Prost and viewing. Any other comments?
Yeah, just keep up the good work. Appreciate it.
Great job.
Um, I'll I've just got a couple of comments here. First of all, yeah, this is when I first got on council, this was one of the projects that we were talking about eight years ago. So it feels good to kind of being at this juncture where we're looking at the long-term, long-range landfill solution because I think this is gonna, what is it, 20 years, 25 years? Or maybe we can expand it.
So 31 years.
31.
If the tonnage rate stayed the same about the same.
Great. Is that just on the cells that are mentioned here, or does that include some expansion to more cells?
The cells that we have permitted.
Great. The I've just got a little notes here. Great job on not building the Taj Mahal and saving us $750,000. That's good. The 948A, what is our if we started looking at the cost of reclamation there? Or what is the process that we go through there? I know it's two years out, but.
Yeah, so we have that in scheduled in future CIP years to to start that closure process. Basically, a couple of years or 18 months or so after we we finish taking waste, we plan to start closure and it'd be in a four-phase process. Because we gotta close the entire facility, so it's a couple hundred acres that we're gonna have to to work through.
Great.
But we have started work on that.
Yeah, because we have to have our plan in place by the time we close it. Okay, good. Citizens will be able to take trash to either the transfer station or the new landfill, right?
That's correct.
Good solution on if we get into a squeeze of the Lacy Lakeview, good thought of getting with them and working something out, although I hope we don't get to that point, obviously. The other thing I like about the transfer station, which will be new for us, this city having a transfer station there because basically it's taking all the city routes will go to the transfer station. The transfer station will use long haul trucks to just continually pick up. It's like a consistent trailer, right? It's the there's not gonna there's gonna be basically one sort of trailer filling up. And to me, it introduces the possibility of getting local vendors to actually truck those loads from the transfer station to the landfill, which I like that. I like keeping local businesses and local vendors being able to perhaps participate in that aspect of it.
Yes, sir. Yep, we actually have a RFP out right now to to bring a third party on for our our hauling from transfer station to to the landfill.
Fantastic. Great presentation. Nice Gantt charts. All looks good.
And we joke about with the Taj Mahal is once we're done, we can just take the modular building and put it in the landfill.
It's got an afterlife in the landfill. All right. Thanks, Cody.
Thanks to your team.
Great.
A great have a great team. Probably don't do most of the work that's showing up here, so we wouldn't be anywhere without our solid waste department and our our other partners. Thank you.
Great presentation, Cody. City Manager Bradley Ford will introduce the next speaker.
The next speaker needs no introduction.
There it is. There it is. Cue the cue the music.
Price, Gavin Price coming down, our Director of Housing and Community Development. He's gonna update the council on our 2024, 2025 annual action plan that guides our expenditures in CDBG and home investment partnership funding. We're fortunate to receive entitlement funding from the federal government in both these programs. But one of the things that that Galen's gonna bring to you that you'll see is those dollars have have somewhat stagnated. And he's gonna walk you through the real effects of of that here in Waco. So looking forward to this presentation. Galen?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As Bradley mentioned, I'm gonna be talking about our annual action plan process and how we develop that, as well as our funding recommendations for our 2425 consolidated annual action plan for funds granted to us by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So one of the critical pieces of our process is engagement. And so the action plan is a culmination of several steps. But community engagement is one of the most important things is we look to develop the plan. And so to that end, we developed a a survey for residents to respond to and give us our give them give us their feedback in regards to developing this plan. So we posted the the survey on social media. We put it in our city of Waco newsletter, as well as posted it on our website. In addition to that, we developed flyers with a QR code and placed them out in libraries and community centers, along with our sub recipients posting the surveys on their website as well. So to that end, we were able to receive 318 responses to our survey, of which 26 of those responses were completed in Spanish. So I wanted to highlight some of the accomplishments that we've had over the last year when it comes to our funding that we've received, not only the accomplishment, but some of the outcomes as well. So from a housing perspective, we have assisted 16 homes with rehab. We provided 23 homes with roof repair, as well as assisting three individuals with down payment and closing cost assistance to help them purchase their first homes. From the community development side, we assisted 185 children with childcare services, 38 persons with rental assistance, as well as 293 homeless individuals with a variety of services, including case management and shelter services.
Galen, can I just chime in for a second and say specifically, as someone who recently earlier this year had an insurance claim denied and had to pay for my own roof out of my pocket, the the roof repair program, again, from very personal experience, goes a long way and certainly does a lot, especially with all the rain and bad weather we've had as of late. So just wanted to call that out as as an awesome service. I see Mike is here tonight, too, so or I guess this afternoon. So thanks for for leading those efforts, and and I'm glad we're able to get 23 roofs done last year. Thank you.
Galen, can I ask a question on the roofing? I have been, you know, in South Waco, we have a lot of older, big, older homes. And I have talked to some of the owners, and they don't want to apply for roofing repair because they are afraid that their homes are too big. Is there is there such a thing as that? Their homes being old but too big for the roofing repair to be done to the house?
No, it is. No, that's not.
No, that's not the case. There we go.
I heard you. But I was just wondering because I don't know why that is out there.
There the way the roof program works is that their grassroots will be able to assist up to a certain amount, up to $7,500 for a roof. Now, if they're not able to qualify under grassroots, they still are to participate in our home rehab program. And roofing will be one of the things that we're able to do under our rehab program. So where grassroots ends and where they're capped, we're able to pick up for roofs that exceed the $7,500 cap that they have. And the reason why we have the $7,500 cap for them is because they only receive so many so much dollars. So we want to make sure they're able to extend the dollars to the maximum that they're able to do. So we wanna make sure they're able to extend the dollars to the maximum that they're able to do. But at the same time, we're able to pick up those that exceed that seventy-five hundred dollar amount.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Not only on the accomplishments, I did wanna highlight some of the outcomes of, you know, not just what they're seeing today, but how the long-term effects are of the, of the dollars that we provide through the program. So for example, with Talitha Coon, eighty-three percent of the students assisted go on to graduate high school, which out of that eighty-three percent, eighty-six percent have went on to pursue higher education. In addition to, under Mission Waco, you've had a hundred and thirty-one persons either sexually reunited with family or moved into permanently housing situations themselves. And looking at Inspiracion, we've had two participants in that program receive their associate's degree, with one moving on to pursue a bachelor's degree, as well as we've had three parents receive their GEDs who participated in Inspiracion. With the Behavioral Health Network, we've had four clients exit the program successfully, meaning that they're able to obtain housing now on their own. This chart shows our historical allocations since 2019. Now, our allocations are not based on an application, a competitive application, but just based on a HUD-derived formula, which considers multiple factors. Now, one thing we wanna highlight on this slide is the effects of inflation. As Bradley mentioned earlier, we've had a decrease in the amount of purchasing power in the dollars that we receive. So I wanna highlight in this chart where the blue shows what was awarded during our program year, which goes from October first through September thirtieth. Now, the orange bar reflects of what would be needed the following program year for that same amount. So as you can see, I wanna highlight our 2024 allocation. So as you can see, that our 24 allocation, there's a gap of about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars between what we received for, in October of 2023, and what that would be in October of 2024.
Galen, is any of the, the receiving of those funds hampered at all by just the ending of COVID-era surplus spending or anything like that, in terms of what we're getting?
It's, it's hard to determine right now. It's based on a formula. Our, our HUD allocation is based on a formula that goes into several factors. It's housing stock, there's, it's, it's an inexact science, and we've been trying to figure out what truly goes into that formula. So what we can say, the population does have an effect. The bigger, the bigger your city size is, the more grant dollars that you end up receiving. So one would hope, as Waco continues to grow, we would see an increase. But this, fortunately, this year doesn't reflect that.
Yeah. Gotcha. All right, thanks.
So next, I'll jump into some of the specifics regarding CDBG and home. So CDBG can be used for a variety of community development needs. Now, there are some limitations placed on certain areas of funding under CDBG, which we have a cap on our administrative expenses of twenty percent, as well as a cap of fifteen percent on our public service activities. Now, public services is the category in which we normally see our largest amount of funding requests. Now, eligible activities, I'm sorry, CDBG must meet a national objective. And those national, national objectives are whether to benefit low-to-moderate income persons, eliminate slums or black, or meet an urgent community development need. Now, as far as eligible activities under CDBG, those include housing rehabilitation, public services, public facilities and improvements, homeownership assistance, and economic development activities, just to kind of name a few of those. On this slide, you'll see the current funding of agencies, the program year 24 request, and the, the recommendation for the program year 2425. On this slide, I like to highlight, we have allocated, recommended allocation of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for our roof repair program, and a little bit under five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for our home rehabilitation program. On this slide, you'll see we're recommending admin at the 274205, which is our twenty percent cap that we're allotted. Here's our request and recommendations for our public service activities. You can see, we did receive eight requests under this category, and we are recommending funding of five of those requests. I like to highlight one in particular, which is a new request that we're recommending funding for, which is the Methodist Children's Home. This is for short-term rental assistance that would be provided to clients that are case managed by the Methodist Children's Home, and this would serve up to fifteen clients.
Question, so I know that as we're accessing how we do more with less, when the, these outside organ, organizations who are not funded, is there follow-up with them about, you know, necessarily why, or it?
Yes, yes. We, we do, we do meet with them. We send out a letter, and then we do offer to meet with them and kind of go over some of the things that they can potentially do to help, to help put them in a better position to possibly be funded in the next, next term.
Okay. No, just because I was looking, and I mean, it, it's an almost impossible decision about how we, we choose, because all the things that are applying are, are necessary things, right? But as we advance in homeownership and writing some of those things, I would think that the tangling, the tangled title would have maybe given, you know, some consideration, just because it's something that we're trying to work to do as we take back controls, well, managing, you know, whole neighborhoods and the whole neighborhood approach that we have, especially with sliding into the land banking and trusts and things.
Yes, and we have had some conversations with, with them about some of the things, and actually, other funding sources that may be available. For example, they're-
Better options.
Yeah. The Federal Home Loan Bank will have some funding available. I, I heard about that at a conference earlier in April.
Oh, cool.
So I did reach out to, to them and let them know that there are potential resources outside of CDBG for them to pursue as well.
Cool. Thank you.
Good work there, Galen, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't have thought, is it on the same scale, the fifty-five that they're asking for? Or less, or we don't know?
I don't know, but I do know that the Federal Home Loan Bank is planning to put a substantial amount of investment into that activity.
Great.
So under our home grant, this is a grant that we use to create affordable housing opportunities for our low-to-moderate income households. Now, as the same with CDBG, there are some restrictions with our spending levels, one of which being ten percent that we're capped on the administrative side. In addition to, we're required to set a minimum of fifteen percent of our allocation set aside for CHODOs. So that, that amount this year, based on our allocation, would be one oh one five seventy-nine. Now, eligible activities under our home grant include down payment and closing cost assistance, tenant-based rental assistance, as well as acquisition of land for the development of affordable housing opportunities. So here, in this chart, you'll see where we have our twenty-three awards, the requests, and what we're recommending for funding out of the 2425 allocation. Now, the funding recommended to the two CHODOs will be used to create affordable housing units. So between those two allocations, the, we're, we're looking to create six affordable housing units with those dollars.
Thank you for that clarification, Galen. That was gonna be my question.
So the next steps would be, if council is, is in agreement with these recommendations, we will have a public hearing on the June eighteenth city council meeting, followed by a public comment period beginning June twenty-fourth and ending July twenty-fourth. We would have an additional resident, a public hearing on August sixth with a resolution for consideration of the adoption of the recommended action plan for your approval, with the action plan being due to HUD by August sixteenth. And with that, I'll answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Price?
Thank you, Galen. Quick question. I know that so much of your work in your department, because of its ties to federal dollars, require heavy community input. And, you know, I know that y'all work tirelessly to get as many people to participate as possible. So if you could repeat, what were the number of the surveys received?
We received three hundred and eighteen surveys.
Okay. And I, I stopped to think about the number of people in this, in this city. Is there not a way, and I don't know, looking to the city attorney, because, you know, I don't wanna do anything that is not legal. Is there some sort of creative way we could think to incentivize participation in these things? I mean, we've, I don't know what it could be or couldn't be, but I know that even though these surveys are not long, it is time-consuming. And, you know, sometimes you have to convince folks to, to do stuff regardless of what's in it for them. But I mean, maybe if we have a, I, I remember in Cody's comments, he was talking about the, ahead-of-time incentivizing, perhaps we need to dangle the carrot. And so I don't know. I mean, it doesn't have to be major. I mean, if it's a, a ticket to the zoo, I mean, some City of Waco swag, I don't know. I mean, but just offer somebody something.
Just a sensible dangle.
Just a little, you know? And I'm like, maybe that would encourage more people, because see, this stuff is important. And it's pivotal in, in how we allocate monies. But because it's tied to the federal dollars, it has to be done. And, you know, what I don't want is few making decisions or, or influencing the men, for the many. And so I just think that maybe there should be another way to do it. I know we, I think we did something like that during COVID, but I mean, we've all slept since then. You know, but perhaps there's something that we could do, just think on it.
Blue, we will definitely explore options and ways that we can perhaps incentivize and get more-
Through the second floor.
Yes, second and third floor.
We will be happy to work with Galen to try to come up with creative solutions.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you for this report, Galen. CDBG funds have always been a pet project. I like to see where we're going. And it used to be that the city council themselves would, we would receive the applications, and we would discuss it, and we would say, okay, these are the guys that we want. And all the council would have to agree on where the funding would go. So I know it's hard work for you, because it was hard work for us. So thank you for taking over that, that process. But I know it's not easy, but it, it is much appreciated by me, the work that you and your team are doing. But the CDBG has always been my favorite project, other than, of course, baseball and fields like that. This is the close second. Thank you, Galen.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Galen, thanks for this presentation. It, I liked the metrics in your first few slides there about the, our investment in the community in these, in these projects, and the return on investment that we're seeing, I think, is impressive, allocating those federal dollars. And I'm, I'm very impressed, even though it was anecdotal, keeping an eye out for other federal funding sources that could maybe address some of these, these folks that are requesting funds. That's brilliant. But thank you, thank you for the presentation. City Manager Ford will introduce the next speaker.
I'd be happy to. You know, I think, I think probably the best way to introduce this one is with a quote. Yeah. "If you don't know where you're going, you'll end up somewhere else." And that's why, that's a Yogi Berra. Yogi Berra is some of the greatest quotes ever. But I just really appreciate Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, because he keeps us going in some sort of direction. And the only things that weave him off is probably me, but, but no, he's got a presentation. He's gonna discuss the public hearing items with you that are on your business session later. Clint?
Thank you, Bradley.
No, don't, don't thank him for that.
Mayor, City Council, we do have the nine public hearings tonight. I'll cover two of them in detail, but I'd be happy to answer any questions and go over the other seven as well. The first one I wanted to highlight is a continuance from a public hearing two meetings ago, from the April sixteenth meeting, on a request to rezone property located at thirty-four twenty West Waco Drive from R one B to O three. This was continued at that hearing because there, some of the neighbors that abut this property had some concerns, and it allowed some time for the applicant to meet with them and address their concerns. This is the, the MHMR office building on Waco Drive. This property is actually made up of five properties. Get the, what else working? There we go. It's actually made up of five properties. The three that are being requested to be rezoning where the office sits now, and then there's actually two other properties owned by MHMR that is, that are vacant right now, that I think are used for a, kind of a small park area, that are currently already zoned O three. So the request was just for the three parcels of the MHMR property that are zoned R one B. This is the, the land use plan along Waco Drive. You have a mix of medium-density residential office flex and mixed-use flex along this section of Waco Drive. And then you can see the zoning. The, the, the three lots where the office building sit are R one B zoning, single-family zoning. We believe that's, there's an office building on there. We believe that's there that way because of, it was a, a, a public building when it was built and didn't have to meet the zoning at the time when it was built, in, I believe, the sixties. And then you, you have the O three up and down Waco Drive. There are seven, and so this would be what it would look like if it's re-zoned. You have the, the apartment complex on the other side. And then you have seven residential homes that, that are along Castle that back up to the property. Three of them actually are on the portion of the property that's already zoned O three, and then four are along the portion that's being requested to be rezoned. The applicant did meet with the, the neighbors, and I think addressed some other concerns, but not all of theirs, and we do anticipate some opposition. And in fact, there was a, a letter submitted to council today from one of the property owners. It actually abuts the existing O three portion of it that is opposed to the request. I did wanna kind of show you a, a larger, about ten-block area of the, the zoning pattern along there. And you can see, here's the property here, the R one B zoning. You can see everywhere between Austin Avenue and Thirty-third Street, which is about a ten-block area, all the properties that front out to Waco Drive have either office- all the properties that front out to Waco Drive have either, uh, office O3 zoning or, uh, a multi-family zoning. So, uh, this would be in line with the, the zoning pattern, uh, along Waco Drive, that section of Waco Drive. All the R1B properties, uh, actually front the, uh, side streets. So they don't have frontage on, where you see R1B that abuts Waco Drive, those, those properties actually front the side streets. Um, O3 zoning is a compatible zoning district with, uh, low-density, single-family. There's, um, safeguards built into the ordinance, um, that, uh, limit the hours of operation for, uh, commercial use between the 7:00 PM, uh, 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Uh, they limit the, the type of commercial uses, uh, they take out all the heavy commercial uses. And then also have setback requirements. So, uh, where O3 abuts, uh, R1B zoning, it requires a 25-foot, uh, building setback. So there's, uh, and it has the same height requirements as R1B, which is, uh, two and a half stories. So, uh, the O3 zoning is designed to, uh, be a zoning, a compatible zoning district with R1B. Uh, and here's the building, uh, and the existing MHMR building, uh, that's, uh, being requested rezoning. Uh, so Plan Commission and staff both recommended approval of R1B zoning because of the, the mentions that I, I made. And also it brings the existing, uh, building into conformance, uh, with the zoning district as it's sold off to a, a private, uh, company from a public entity.
So that, is that, that's it on, on that one? Was there, I mean, so the, it's R1B right now with the exception that there's a government office building? Is that, what is, what is the exception that allows the office building to be there now?
So, the, uh, when it was built, um, back in the 60s, um, governmental, uh, agencies were allowed in that zoning district, didn't have to abide by the zoning. And so, uh, as it's being sold off to a private company, they're wanting to get it in conformance with the zoning. So, it would be in compliance with the zoning.
So, so it's legal non-conforming right now?
Legal non-conforming use right now.
And then on this one too, the neighbors are, well, I mean, kind of informally at this point, but some neighbors have expressed a desire for O1 zoning, but that's not before the council, meaning that since that hasn't been requested or posted or noticed, that can't be decided upon. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that option, uh, was presented to, uh, the applicants and they would like to proceed with the, the request that's on the agenda tonight for the O3.
There was also, it seems like the last time we talked about this, the possibility, I think you introduced the possibility. I think, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez also, uh, uh, talked about it for a bit. But somehow getting, uh, keeping R1B on that back 35 feet or some, something, I forget how you were going to construct that.
That, that is an option. Our recommendation would, it's still for the whole property, but, uh, that is something that the council can consider, uh, because it's a lesser than the request, uh, that you could put in there. As I mentioned earlier, the, the O3 zoning already has a, a built-in buffer because it's adjacent to R1B, um, a 25-feet setback. And so, um, but there is the potential where you could pull that zoning up a little bit and leave an additional buffer.
And, uh, as presented, if I remember correctly, at the time, they, it, it, right now, the building's purpose is not changing. It, should the on, correct?
That, that's correct. My understanding is their, the plan is to lease back for a period of at least a year to MHMR that would keep it exactly the way it is. And then, at that point, uh, they were going to renovate it and turn it into private offices.
So, so the, the shared intended goal is for it to be office-based?
That's, that's my understanding.
Because I can understand, you know, the neighbor's concern about, um, the unknown. But again, unknown is unknown. And, you know, if we, I, I guess at this point, we would have to go on good faith that they will do what they said they were going to do.
That's correct. I, our, our staff feeling is even, um, if it, if the property's sold, get, because once it's rezoned, anything in that.
It can be, yeah.
But, uh, our, our opinion is the, the uses allowed in the O3 and the, um, development standards that are required in O3 make it compatible regardless of how it's, if it stays office or redevelops is another use that's allowed in O3.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Not to, uh, I, I know we're not, uh, voting on, on any other zoning opportunity, uh, for this, um, or speaking on that tonight, but could you clarify, um, as Councilmember Boarder mentioned, uh, O1 zoning, what that entails specifically?
So, O1 and O3?
When, as compared to O3, yeah?
Sure, yeah, so O1 and O3 are very similar. So they allow, um, low-density residential, so single-family duplexes. And then office uses, and the difference between O1 and O3 is O3 allows some limited commercial uses where O1 does not. And so those limited commercial uses would be kind of your service, uh, you know, personal service shops like barber shops, um, and, uh, uh, small retail, small restaurant, uh, with limited hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So that, that's the difference between the O3 and O1.
Gotcha.
And O3's hours are whatever?
O, O3 is, is 7:00 to 7:00.
I mean, O3 is 7:00 to 7:00.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, O3 is 7:00 to 7:00. Were you asking if what O1's hours were?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So, O1, there's not any commercial uses allowed in O1? So there's not a, uh, in, in either zoning district, there's no restriction on the hours of operation of office use? Just the, just the commercial use in, in O3.
So it can be anything, but it has to close at 7:00?
So, in O3, if a retail use would have to close at 7:00. O1 does not allow retail uses. Uh, and then there, there's no time limit on office use?
Got it.
Yeah. Yeah, restaurants would be allowed in O3, but not in O1.
But it would still have to close at 7:00?
Without getting the, because they can apply for a, a variance on that, right?
Okay.
To, to.
There is the option to, uh, apply for a special permit for extended hours, but that would have to go through the same public hearing and approval process.
Appreciate it, Clint.
Um, yeah, I, it's still, I'm, not to leave this one yet, but the, I understand, because if you go, go back to the previous one. Yeah, that, I mean, I understand where people right behind there, you know, have lived with this situation for whatever. I guess since 50 years or whatever. So, to lose that, potentially lose that, uh, R1B buffer is concerning. I wish there was an easy solution here. So that's why I keep asking about this little bu- uh, building in an R1B, 25-foot, uh, uh, buffer there. But that would, would that, that would have to be agreed to by the applicant, or could we just put that stipulation in there?
That's something that council can approve.
Yeah. So we could say, go ahead and you had O3 on the front, but we would like you to, uh, was it 30, 30-foot or 25-foot? I forget what you suggested.
We would recommend, uh, i- if we went that option, that it would be 25 feet. And so you would have, you would end up with it on the setback line. So to have an additional 25-foot setback.
Actually be zoned, you'd have a little strip, yellow strip in the back of that. And could later, the applicant, until a year or two years, come back and say, hey, we really, I've decided I want that R1B strip to be O3 after all. Could you do that?
Yeah, that's an option.
Okay, all right, I'll quit beating this one up.
And then the other one is 358. Uh, this is a, a request to rezone to R1, to a residential PUD for a property down on South 4th Street. It's a, an acre lot, um, uh, that's zone single-family. The developer wants to develop it for single-family, but wants to do it in, in all-on-one lot. So, uh, it's the same density, six units, uh, on the one acre, which is what's allowed in the, in the current zoning. The, uh, Plan Commission did recommend approval of this and there was no opposition. Uh, why I'm highlighting this one is there, we have a ordinance requirement that the owner does have to sign the application for rezonings, which they did and we verified at the time of the application. But after the, uh, Plan Commission hearing, uh, we were made aware of a, a potential dispute of ownership on the property. And that's being, uh, worked out, uh, right now. We anticipate that to be worked out in the next week or so. But until that gets worked out, we do recommend that, that we continue this case to, to verify ownership. The applicant and owner, uh, are aware of that and are okay with the continuance tonight. So our recommendation on this one will be for continuance.
That's 358, right?
358. Uh, and then the, the other, um, seven public hearings, um, include, uh, the 25th Street Corridor Plan Adoption, two rezonings, two abandonments, uh, one special permit, and then one final PUD. All, uh, recommended, uh, by Plan Commission or the, uh, Steering Committee for the 25th Street Corridor. Uh, and, and no opposition on any of those cases. But I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have on any of those.
Clint, on 356, were there any questions about that from any of the Plan Commission members?
On the, uh?
356.
On the?
Rezone, uh, .261 acres of land.
On the?
522 herring?
So, um, this was a request, um, the, the land use plan is medium-density office flex, which does, um, is in line with O1. It's, it's zone multi-family, uh, and then you do have a property that was rezoned in 2016, right across the street to O1. Uh, and then there was no opposition on it, so Plan Commission was okay with it.
I would say, I would say not.
I was just wondering, Clint, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Clint? I think, I think you're good, Clint, thanks.
Thank you.
On the, uh, on the works, on the, uh, public hearing, go ahead.
357. Can I see where that's at?
It's the triangle piece right across from University.
Okay, uh, but that's not clear, uh, near where, we were discussing the Kendrick Elementary, uh, properties. Okay, okay, I was trying to get it in my mind where this was. That also has some, uh, housing on Chester, looks like.
Yes, um, the, the developer did, uh, meet with the Alta Vista Neighborhood Association and then the, uh, the church that, that's next door, had meetings with them.
And there was no opposition?
We didn't get any opposition on it.
Because that's pretty close to my house as well.
And it, um, it's already zoned multi-family, they're asking for the next level up. Uh, that, that does allow a little bit more density, uh, but it'd be similar density that you see at the apartment complexes that are already in that section of New Road.
So there would be more traffic for the high school across the street as well than if they did go more dense?
Correct, the, the current multi-family allows, uh, up to about 14 units an acre. And what they're requesting allows about 25 units an acre.
Light right there.
My, my understanding, it's been, they, they just did some work there.
There is a light there, just recently.
I was like, mm-hmm.
Just recently, yeah. Oh, I don't know about this one.
Any other questions for Clint? Bradley, is that it for the, uh, work session items?
That is all.
Um, we'll now go to the future agenda items. Are there any requests for future agenda items?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to, uh, request that, a presentation, uh, from staff on our city's programming for our seniors.
Oh, that's, that's an ideal.
I've visited some senior center, centers in other cities and I'd like to, to see what we're offering and maybe what, what more we can do. I know with the, you know, beautiful, brand-new Doris Miller Recreation Center, I know that they have, they do workouts and stuff in the morning, but I just, I think we can go a little bit deeper, so I want to talk about that. That's it.
Any other future agenda items? With that, uh, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the Assistant City Secretary at 5:07 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. Brittany Boham versus City of Waco, Texas, call's number 2022-3567-4, pending in the 170th Judicial District Court. Desiree Myers, individual, and on behalf of Christopher Mason and Jasmine Myers Miners versus City of Waco, Texas, call's number 2022-4284-5, pending in the 414 Judicial District Court. Real property tax, or real property, sorry, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, and Economic Development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551-087. We are now in executive session.